Good morning. This is the July meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Library Trustees. And I'm John Johnston, Vice President substituting for Michael Dunn. And we have a quorum this morning, so if we could go around the table with our trustees. Introduce themselves.
Good morning, I'm Tressa Setlock, Treasurer.
Good morning, John Walters.
Dorothy Waters.
All right. Right, thank you. See. Yeah, the first item is the approval of the of the agenda as submitted.
I would like to add. Uh, under Director Support informational will look.
Okay. Any objection?
It'll be the first item under in right after informational.
All right. Next item is the approval of the June twenty twenty four minutes. And and have any additions or corrections?
On the bottom of page three.
I'm sorry, we need to actually have a vote to approve the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, motion in seconds and and.
Okay.
All that.
All right, can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now we have the the minutes.
So at the bottom of page three. And and this may have been correct at the time of the meeting. But it notes that our July meeting is going to be in Leonard Town. Was that erroneously on the minutes or did we it was right on the minutes but then kind of? Procedural change happened.
It was right on the minutes and we sent you the wrong place, which is why we're in this room.
We need to do a. The June minutes.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See. Um, next is the. Approval of the monthly expense ledger.
I do it. We're here. Oh, I have a question. For June tenth for the Dell. How many computers were purchased? You know?
I think it was six. Just so you know, we had planned to purchase a number of computers. Uh, earlier in the year, we used a three thousand dollar grant from Smurla. But we helped, we cut our purchase in half to wait and see how much money we had at the end of the fiscal year, and then Robert put in a final. Hey, a final request for more computers based on what was left in the budget.
And there is a. Three year plan to replace all computers in the library, so we basically just keep updated every three years. We find that. By then enough has happened with capacity and bandwidth and all those things that that the computers do need to be replaced.
Okay.
Can I have a question on page two? Just about the midpoint. Uh, twelve thousand dollars minus a five thousand dollar reimbursement. For summer reading t-shirts.
That's that's how much it costs to do the summer reading t-shirts, which are one of the prizes and greatly prized by the customers. And uh, five thousand of that amount was reimbursed by Smurla, so your question, the total amount we spent or what?
Why are we doing it? I mean, how many shirts do we get for seven thousand dollars? Or twelve thousand, actually?
Look, um, it's several thousand shirts, though, and it's our main summer reading prize. Let me, I can get you that number, hang on.
And they are the most. Sought after prize that we do, and also it is advertisement all over the county by every patron of the library.
Yeah, people wear them out in public.
They do wear them. I saw somebody at Food Lion yesterday wearing one. Who is not an employee.
Then looking on page three at the very top. Have summer reading programmer presenter. Please explain that.
Well, we have.
The t-shirt, or we have just under two thousand t-shirts for that amount. They're roughly six dollars apiece, but it depends on the size.
We bring in presenters for summer reading. And they do different programs, and so the cost on those can vary greatly depending on what it is. But, you know, so, for example, one of the most popular programs has to do with reptiles. It's not free. Um, you pay the presenters to come out, and that's so so John, this was one of our our sort of highlight.
And there's his presentation tied into. Reading programs month we're doing reptilian books or whatever.
Uh, well, this was not.
He also does four performances for us for that price, and we get several hundred people per performance. So it's pretty good um, price per person for us. More than that, I think we usually do between six and eight performances through the summer. So um, it's a little bit more than it's around two a month ish. Um, and yeah, it's a variety of performances. They're not necessarily strictly tied to the theme of that summer, but they're just wide interest for children programs. So this year we have dance, we have um, like a Mexican ballet, we have reptiles, we have Mr. John, which is a musical. Performance. Um, we also have storytelling, like it's a it's a variety of things.
So when you say that there are. If four of these presentations.
I believe I can quick check, but I believe we did seven, or we will. Oh, Mr. John did four. Yes, Mr. John, that one performer did four performances. So he did one in each area of the county. So he did one at Leonard Town, one at Lexington Park, and then. He's too large for the Charlotte Hall Library. We have too many people who want to go, so we actually do it at Mechanicsville Elementary School. And then he also did a sensory friendly as a fourth performance at Leonard Town.
We have to pay the elementary school.
We do pay a small fee, but it's not very much. We have a pretty good agreement with the schools. But we do pay for offsite. Um, luckily now Leonard Town and Lexington Park can both handle the performances. Their main rooms are large enough, but Charlotte Hall is not. We. Uh, Mr. John can get anywhere, you know, two to three hundred people wanting to see him. Uh, it starts at ten thirty and it's um, dance by numbers and um, it's math and dance.
Uh, looking on. Or then about five down. What is forty six hundred plus for summer presenter there?
Yeah, I have a question on page three. The United Way Campaign, what is the first time I've seen that one?
So United Way Campaign was. They did this several years ago before I started in this position and um. Hadn't been back since COVID. But the deductions were still coming from our employees' paycheck. So this isn't our money, it's not coming from our. Our pot or anything like that. This came directly from the employees' deductions, but we had this money sitting in an account. That had never been spent to United Way. So United Way in the middle of that um, Southern Maryland or for St. St. Mary's County.
It dissolved and then came back and joined with all three counties and it's like Southern Maryland United Way now. Um, so one of the things that I was working with the accountants on today. This year was. Found out. But first we had to get contact with United Way to figure out who to send it to, so that that was finally done, and that's the. Payment from the deductions from employees' paychecks. That is not our money, it's not operating funds, it came. Nowhere, did not come from the commissioners, did not come from the library, it is all from our employees.
Okay.
Over four years.
So it's employee contribution.
Employee contributions over four years.
Are we still doing that?
We discontinued it once I finally got because because we didn't have contact. Um, but we will be inviting them back to the staff day on this in December.
Okay.
Yeah, United Way used to come to us. With the onset of COVID, they stopped visiting the library.
Okay.
And they also reformed, so there is no United Way of St. Mary's County anymore as there used to be. It's now a tri-county thing, so. They'll be back in December and we'll see if any employees wish to continue.
Yeah, my yeah, my employer does a campaign each October. With the corporate match for some of it.
Well, we used to, but we can actually stop coming to us. We stopped doing it, so, um, but they we didn't stop the donations, but now we'll we'll have staff re-up if they want to. Or you could give to the Library Foundation.
Or could the United Way be, I mean, the library be a United Way entity?
The foundation, the.
Has to be that specifically as opposed to a nonprofit. I know. We're not profit.
United Way.
Are there any further questions about the ledger?
Oh, yes, I do have one more.
Sure.
At the near bottom of page four. We have an upgrade to the backup camera for thirty six hundred dollars on, I guess, the book will be up.
Yes, the original camera of by specs. Was functional. But it was not very good. Um, it was very difficult to, and I've driven the van with it before, to see exactly how far you were going. It was actually an inverted image. So we upgraded that uh, figuring that it's going to make it a lot safer to drive, especially backing up, and that's what that payment was for.
All right, all right, can we uh, have a motion to approve the ledger as presented?
I'll some might make that motion.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next, next is the treasurer's report, and Tressa, you have that for us?
Sure. Um, so you'll have it in front of you. Um, as you can see, all of our. In there somewhere. Uh, without going through each um. Entry, um, everything has increased in value. Um, the original Vanguard increased by a hundred. Uh, thirty nine cents, the Rudolph by eighteen dollars and twenty eight cents, not huge increases, but at least it's an increase. And then for the Schwab account, um, I basically put the current value based on the end of last year. And uh, we have a change in value of a little over seventy thousand dollars um, in the good.
All right, all right, thank you.
I have a question. Rudolph is what's paying the interns?
Yes.
And what is an intern or plural or something?
What is an intern?
You mean the cost of it?
It's about twenty five hundred to three thousand dollars. It's ten weeks at minimum wage of fifteen dollars an hour at twenty one hours a week.
Yeah.
We have four, one is paid by the board, one is paid by the foundation, one is paid by the friends, and one is paid by the library.
Up to three thousand dollars.
Three thousand dollars each. That's approximate. I'd have to do a calculation. I mean, I have the calculation. I send it to Tressa each year.
Yeah, it's it's between twenty five hundred and three thousand. I forget exactly where it was.
How many of uh, our our interns have now become employees of the library?
Six, we counted last time.
It's a great way to build for the future.
Yeah, it's a great program having paid interns.
Yeah.
But to mention and understand this. One of those four is coming out of Rudolph's.
Correct.
And it's twenty five hundred and three thousand.
Give or take, yeah.
It doesn't. Ode well for the life of the fund.
That's what the fund was created for. I can't. I can't tell you what the fund does.
You're saying we're not going to outpace cost. And I guess you need to be prepared that one of those places is going to go away.
Well, for the life of the fund, it's going to help pay for a uh, intern.
Yeah, but. We've only got fourteen thousand dollars in.
Yeah, that's enough to pay for interns for a few years yet.
Completely.
And we'll. What do you want me to say? That's what the fund was created for. That's what it does.
Maybe it's invested in the wrong banks.
I don't know what you want me to say, John.
Do we need to approve the treasurer's report?
Or do approve?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And. This month, we don't have a Smurla report. We did not meet in July. Our next meeting will be in August. So uh, next would be the uh, the celebrations.
Yes, thank you. We have one gift parade for Allison Guy, uh, who is at the Charlotte Hall Library. And this is for a program she does. And that's a program for adults with. Or developmental disabilities and for their caregivers. And she does a really great creative job with that and. Brings out a craft that participants can take home and complete. And we're just celebrating that program and service to all St. Mary's County residents, and if I can actually get you to sign that. Settle along to Allison. Congratulations, Allison, and thank you so much for your creativity. And the joy. Uh, moving on to the director's. I will be happily in this case.
Aaron has just joined us.
Oh, great.
Aaron, just so you know, we you we can't see you. Um, on the screen today, but we should be able to hear you if you speak.
Okay, thank you for letting me know.
We can hear you. So we are looking at the annual statistics. You've got a four. The first page is. Sorry. Uh, no, I'm a sas or first. Yeah. Um, and removing. Just take a look at those. Um, I only really want to look at the sort of full year as opposed to the last three months individually. Um, so. Hmm, it was in the packet, should be there. There it is right there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, so. Physical circulation. Isks uh. And Charlotte Hall slightly up on the year as the last. Uh, we're looking. Not so much of the quarterly figures, although we can look at those two. Um, and um. So Leonard Town and Lexington Park slightly down, Lexington Park down more on the quarter. Just because we had a time when it was closed, the stacks were closed when we were redoing them, so I. That will account for some of that. You see that the mobile library. Compared to the previous year when we were not doing as much has grown substantially. So we are. Uh, down about four percent on your physical circulation. Skipping down to hotspots. Uh, we we also. For regional circulation, that doesn't the manuals of items. So we're going to skip down to hotspots. You see that's up forty four percent. Um, we are seeing increased popularity there, especially at Lexington Park. Um, and we will be enhancing those devices. Uh, our big growth area in terms of circulation numbers, although um, you see that the numbers for print still outstrip. The numbers for digital, that's because of the limits. Checking out digital, I mean, we simply can't have. As they might like to. Um, but uh, overdrive up twenty four percent, hoopla up eleven percent and. Our circulation says well, Alice being the app that gives you overdrive plus other content, and we're trying to get people over to using that more. So digital circulation up twenty two percent. And that sort of brings us up to being pretty much flat for the year. I mean, there's a difference of what five hundred and. Change items, so. Pretty much the same as last year there. Um. Our events kind of go up and down. You see that our virtual events and recorded events were down in. Um, attendance down in numbers. Um, is what we're looking at, just the numbers of them here, but our in-person events are up and our outreach events are up, so twenty one percent. In increase of the number of events for the year, and in terms of the attendance at thirty two percent. So we're seeing more programming. That is reaching more people there. Meeting room use up nine percent. I'm going to flip the page here. Visitors Charlotte Hall and Leonard Town both up some, Lexington Park down some, and again, we did have a quarter. Uh, late there where you see percent the 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 late, the last quarter where we were doing work on it down fifteen percent, so I think that's going to account for quite a bit. But visitor use up. Computer use down, that's not so surprising. Um, we're going to see that continue, I think, as more and more people have, especially tablets or smart. About necessarily coming to the library computers, so we'll need to look at the future in terms of what that kind of expenditures will be. We'll probably ultimately end up moving more towards. Having laptops that people can check out and use in the library rather than those large computer banks in time. I suspect is the direction that that's going to go. Um. We've had more visits to the website than the previous year. I don't have final figures for social media. They were up over the quarter. Um, so basically, um, although circulation. Kind of flat for the year, everything else is coming along very nicely, and at the very bottom of that page, you'll see the tri-county physical circulation. This does not include digital. Um, Calvert County down one percent, Charles County up one percent, but as you see from the total numbers, they really don't have. Sorry, Charles, much. To do but go up um, for, you know, having fifty percent more population than we do, they I I they circulate as much as a county. Um, and we're still leading, but we were down four percent, so there's a. A goal for us for this upcoming year to try to increase that physical circulation. Any questions about the annual stats?
I do have one if.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so the uh, mobile library looks popular. How many miles have we put on it so far?
I don't know. A lot.
Would know, but.
I see it around the lot.
Oh, it's all over the county and it goes quite far, so it's down in Ridge, it's down in the seventh district, it's up in Charlotte Hall. So we're putting quite a few miles, and I'd say, but I don't have a total figure for you right now.
She. It, she's tracking it for all of.
Would you say that the schedule is pretty much the way it's supposed to be, or is that still a work in progress?
That's still the work in progress. I have reports for all the months, and I can share those reports with you. Um, where we are seeing real um. Investment by the public are more like special events. The regular schedule, I think, is still the work in progress. We've got some stops where. And there are private stops and then they're kind of like public stops, so like the museum's going to be a public stop. We go to the two museums, St. Clement's Island and Tiny Point. Um, a private stop will be like a daycare. And we're seeing. Really good um, participation at the private stops. And at special events, so you know, when the eclipse event, for example, brought out hundreds of people, and that's not uncommon. Um, but the public stops, I don't think we're seeing, you know, it's going to be five, ten people at those, so we need to look at and just see. But I think that those will grow over time because we need to get the word out to everybody in the area. Hey, it's coming at this time. The mobile library is uh, schedule is posted online, so people can see that. We are running into one problem, but I think we've solved it with the excessive heat we've been having. Um. It's a large space inside, it's made of aluminum, and it heats up quickly and. We were not able to plug it in for overnight use, but we figured that out. We were backing it into the space where the buggy. Uh, would normally be parked because they're not really using that much, and we can now plug it in overnight and use the electricity. To keep it cool overnight. We actually had something melt inside of it. So I I think that will help with continued visits. We did have to cancel some. Of the regular visits, just because if it was going to be ninety seven degrees and ninety percent humidity in the van, I mean, the library simply wasn't cold. We thought it was hazardous for our staff to be out under those conditions, so I think we've got that sorted. With any luck, uh, some of the excessive heat we've been experiencing will abate. Um, but I think we're in for more in July and August.
Would the parking canopy be practical?
Um, it would just be a question of coming up with the funding for it. Um, yes. We are still waiting for the county to finish the actual parking pad for the mobile library and and we're negotiating with them on that.
All right.
Cannot forgotten, when did that go officially active?
The the mobile library, February.
February?
Yeah.
February was our launch, but they really started all of their stops in March. They did some just test run stops in February. And also, I I do want to point out that they're doing their summer reading storytime is called Spark. It's storytime in the park. And it is getting between fifty and a hundred people even in the heat.
Yeah, so we're we're. We're really pleased with the impact that it's making. It's a lot of folks are are visiting it. And when I go out in the community, a lot of people, well, I saw the mobile library, so it's just a great tour to see it on the road. It's. Uh, if you've seen it, you know, it's very visible, but we like it that way.
The question about the mobile hotspots, um, is there anything uh, specific that's driving uh, the uh, rising demand other than just the cost of internet?
Um, I would say people um. Probably like the connectivity, especially like. Some are serving, and it's all. It it gives them the ability to connect when they're out there.
All right, yes.
Yeah, the the more circulation we get, and we are getting uh, supplemental fund. It's uh. There's something that. Sort of on a cost basis that, you know, saying sending out laptops.
Yep, I saw someone checking out one out yesterday.
So. So statistics, um, we'll look, go ahead and look at the fiscal year twenty-four budget. Um, with the um statement upfront that it is not final. Um, we still have bills that will be um uh for June. And there's still the payroll. Um, so if you look on page one, you see right now there's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars left. But when that payroll comes around, that's probably. Um, so again, this is not final and in fact, we won't have. The exact figures for you for fiscal year twenty-four until Belinda works with our accountants to give you the profit-loss statement. So when that happens, you'll have a really accurate number about where we were um for this fiscal year. But um, just a couple of sort of highlights on it. Um. Let's go ahead and take a look on page five. At the very top, F O L donation expenses and um. And donation expenses, um, we um are. Sort of spending out more there than we budgeted for. We did have a large amount of the F O L funds. That had built up over the years and we're spending those out um. To kind of bring that down and that will ultimately give you a more accurate idea of what the fund balance will be. Because there won't be these restricted funds sitting there. Um, we don't yet have a um. Uh. Check from the F O L for the spring sale. We asked them to to hold on to that for this fiscal year. So we don't yet know what the amount coming in for the friends for this year will be, but I'm expecting to get some money.
Fiscal twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, we we said, don't give it to us last year. We'll take it for this upcoming year and then we'll spend it all during the year. So that that doesn't build up as a, you know, as a restricted a- amount that's in the budget.
Um, so this, this was money already on our books, but we just have to spend it.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was, we had the money and now we're spending it. Um, so you see that um the original budget on the bottom of page five there was. Uh, slightly over five million and we've spent to date four point eight seven two million. Leaving a hundred eighty thousand left. Um, but. Uh, again, these are not finals, so that's not a final figure that we've got, you know, money that's not spent for this year. We won't know that yet. Especially since there'll be other expenses coming in. Just a reminder that we did put seventy-five thousand dollars. Aside from the fund balance. So if we're going, you know, seventy-four thousand dollars in the hole, we have not exceeded the budget. Um, that will just be sort of where we are um. At the end, so if you look over on page six, I just wanted to draw your.
John, the one that's on your side is the one that I updated this morning, just added in the Leonard Town utilities. So that's why the number might be different than what he's telling you.
Yeah, oh, yes, and the, in terms of utilities, we think that those are final expenses now. Um. And those are on page two. So. We think, although again, it's, these are not final totals until we do that profit-loss statement. But we think we are. Within tolerance on most of the utilities for the year and that means that our guesses on them from this upcoming year are gonna be pretty good as well.
Michael, you had at a past meeting talked about. A solar panel over the parking lot. Can you bring us up to date on those thoughts?
We did not get a grant for that. Um, we were applying for. Um, a government earmark for it and applying for a solar grant. And we're going to try it again next year to get the grant. Um, but we we didn't get that funding unfortunately.
Who would make the grant?
Um, it's EBSCO is a company. And if you're asking who's applying for it or?
No, no, no.
Yeah.
What's the source of the money?
EBSCO is a company.
EBSCO.
Yeah.
So state got anything for going green?
We would have to get a capital fund for that. Um. I would say that um. It it's not impossible. We got fifty thousand dollars for the mobile library for the state. But getting the amount that we would need for that full project probably would be difficult for us to do.
And what do you estimate that to be?
Well, if we're putting up uh an overhang, it's gonna be over a million dollars. Yeah, um, so. Um, that would, it's not necessarily impossible. Um. We want to talk to um our state delegation about that as something that they do. Um, because they would have to put the request forward at the state level and get it into the governor's budget. Uh, to be approved. Um, I'd say that. Um. I think our our chances of the private funding might be a little better.
And speaking of budgets, there was a blurb in the paper the other day about the governor wants to take a hundred and forty-one, forty-nine mil. Out of the state's budget. I mean, not big in the grand scheme of things, but any indication as to where that hit is gonna fall?
We don't think it's gonna come at to libraries. We think that our funding is gonna be stable from the state.
Okay.
Um, and they're providing roughly, call it twenty-two, twenty-three percent of our funding. So we don't want to see a a hit there. Um, for this upcoming year, we're about twenty-seven thousand dollars more than we were the previous year. And we don't think that the 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 hit's gonna come to libraries, but we'll wait and see.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, for the uh solo panel idea, getting back to that for a second. Um, if we if we were successful in in having those installed. Would the uh would the electricity generated come directly into the buildings or would it go into the grid?
Um, we think that it would initially come to the building. And if there were excess, then that's gonna go into the grid. Um, so. It would be nice if if we could set it up that um it it was completely powered that way. Um. I don't know to what extent um solar generators are good enough to.
So that on extended period where solar panels aren't producing as much that you begin to. Um, they. Um, that technology, as you know far better than I do, is improving. Um, but when I had my solar panels, when I did it at my house, I think it was three years ago. Great investment, I said, I think, uh, our bills are that critical. Um, it's um. They they said, don't bother doing the sort of the generator that will.
Okay, I was interested in the, it could be an investment, you know, if it if it dephrase our utility.
Am I being heard now? Okay. We really need to get this upgrade going and I have an update for you on that later.
John.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, it's called net metering. Um, can measure in both directions when you have a s- a solar facility installed. So.
Okay, um, the other thing I kind of wanted to point out to you um. Was on page six. The, yeah, it's they're gonna be the same on that one, um, but the bottom of page six, um. You see, we did have seventy-five thousand, six hundred dollars used with the fund balance. And we're hoping we don't have to do that, which would mean, you know, the the budget for the year, we didn't dip into the fund balance. And we were, call it seventy-six thousand dollars away from that, so we. But um, uh, at this point, we can't say, but I'm anticipating we may have to spend at the fund balance somewhat for the year. Um, notice that we're getting more interest from the M L G I P account than we had anticipated. Um, that's our account into which the state puts money, for example, and we draw it out as needed. Um, interest rates are high right now and that's a good thing in terms of of getting money. Um. So. But just so you know that the interest that is going to that account, we are using in our operating funds. Um, something to note, um. So if you look at. Page ten. Um, you kind of get a. A final picture of the donations and where we think the fund balance is at the moment, but we'll report out to you later. Um, what exactly we think that the fund balance is looking like. You you asked that question and we've got a full report for you. So that's kind of where we were for fiscal year. Uh, just a real overview on it. Again, we won't know until we get that profit-loss statement and have all the expenses. For the last month, exactly what last year looked like. Um, every year in July, the board. Charges me to provide you with a turnover report of staff and of staff demographics. Um, the turnover report I've given you, um, and. You see that. Um. Most of turnover really tends to come in terms of numbers in the non-exempt. Um, you know, sort of category. Um, and. This year, we did have some turnover at at the high, at at higher level. Um, and. Those um. Were primarily for someone leaving to get more money um in a different position. We did hire one of those people back. Um, so that's good, but the turnover rate for the year was fifteen percent. That's down from twenty percent last year. And the prior year, it was substantially higher. It was up to thirty-three percent. So we are seeing stabilization and I think that the amount of money that we've managed to give to staff. In terms of races is helping greatly. We're more competitive with some of the other entities out in the county. Um, I mean, we'll never match the base, um, but that's. Something nobody in the county really can do. Um, so we are finding then that. Things are stabilizing quite a bit. We did lose three people that, you know, we we'd say are dysfunctional. And I define that as they're leaving for better opportunities. These are folks we really wish we could have kept. But we just can't, we couldn't match what they were able to make outside, although as I say, we did hire one of those back. So. Looking at um. I I was having trouble coming up with. Good employment figures for leavings across industries. I could pay nine hundred dollars and get this really great detailed report, but I didn't feel like spending nine hundred dollars on it. Um, but I can tell you one figure I was able to get in retail and wholesale. Which is kind of where we're competing for our frontline staff. The turnover rate last year was thirty-two point nine percent. Across industries. And if you're looking at something like service industries, another area where we'd say that we're also competing. I was seeing figures anywhere from forty to sixty percent turnover in service industry. So. Um, I'd say that. We were concerned several years back. I still don't want people leaving for other opportunities if we can keep them. But I'd say that uh we are doing much better than we were. Your staff demographics report, um. I spot one error in it, um. It's at the very top under Charlotte Hall. Um, that one hundred percent should be moved to the right, actually the twelve point five percent and the six point two five percent. I just had them in the wrong place. But um. You can see that um. On page two of that. An overview, so the county in twenty twenty-two, those were the figures I could find that I thought were. Most accurate. I didn't want to use the twenty twenty decennial census. Um, so. Forty-nine point six percent uh of the people in the county are women. Fifty point four percent were men, white population seventy-two point two percent. Um, African-American population fifteen point six percent, Hispanic six percent. Um, Asian three percent and other, which is American Indian, Hawaiian. Um, or multi is three point two percent. The library for fiscal year twenty-five is the next, and again, this is a snapshot. If we did it in in December, it might be a slightly different, but it's it's stays fairly consistent. Um, so seventy, of seventy-eight point one percent of our employees being women. Um, that's not so surprising in a library. Um. Uh, nineteen point two percent uh men and three point five percent um saying um non-binary. Um. Seventy-two point six percent um white, seventeen point eight percent African-American, four point one percent Hispanic. Four point one percent Asian and one point four percent other. So, um, and then I just gave you last year's figures at this time. Seventy, eighteen point six, five point seven, four point three and one point four. So overall, um. We are in most areas, um. Uh, fairly. Aligned with the county, um, slightly higher percentage of African-American, um, and slightly lower percentage of Hispanic. I would say, um, but if you're only looking at one or two people making the difference in terms of Hispanic, then I don't think we're that far off. Um, and then I I just break it down by the different positions. And what I'd say, um, if you look at the very last page, page four. Is that? If you look at our paraprofessional levels, you see substantial diversity. And at an administrative level, you see a very higher comparative percentage of African-American employees. Um, so those are um areas where I think that we're doing pretty well. I'd still say that um we want at the library assistant manager level. Um, to be working to increase the diversity of the library staff. And we do have internal plans. We try to grow people internally. Um, and part of that higher percentage for African-Americans at administrative is because of those efforts. So while we're not where we necessarily want to be, we'd like to see more full-time. You know, members, more diverse compared to the county. We're certainly representative and even slightly, slightly better. And we'll continue to work on those those efforts. Um, this may take us a bit of time. I apologize for that. Um, I was asked to look at the statewide library blueprint. And at our strategic plan and talk about areas of overlap. Should we be adding something from the state plan to our strategic plan? And the answer is, I don't think so. Um. There's some areas where we've absolutely in line with it. There's other areas where it would be out of scope for us. So I'll review those with you pretty quickly. I've got nice color coordination for you here. Um, green means that. We already have that specifically in our strategic plan. And blue means that we'll respond to state-led efforts on that. And black means it's kind of out of scope for us. Should be there somewhere. There it is. So one of their um primary goals was artificial intelligence. Commit to increased awareness of artificial intelligent technologies and their effect on libraries and society. In areas that are green, we already have this as part of our strategic plan and indeed our operations. We formed a A I team. We are. Looking at the different models. We are looking at ways that we can create programming. We are looking to develop standards for our use of it in the library. So we're absolutely in line already with what the state's doing there. Um, the state wants to grow partnerships and a network of experts across the state to bring. Artificial intelligence library work and we will certainly. Excuse me, um. Be a part of that statewide effort. And can perhaps be finding effort, uh, experts here in Saint Mary's County that we will work with. Um. Says monitor prepare for AI's influence on the value of library programs and services. And I I cut out the words, the value of. I'm not certain what that means, frankly. Um, but uh I will say that. Well, we're not directly going to look at, hey, how is AI influencing library programming in general? We'll certainly be looking at having programming and how we can use it effectively. Um. To help create program descriptions, for example. Um, so. It says convene public discussions, conversations and programs. We're already going to be. Doing programs ourselves, but as they have conversations at the state level, we'll be working with them on that. And it says lead the development library build AI applications. Uh, I don't think we've got the capacity to build applications ourselves. But we'll certainly look as the state does at ways, if the sort of library AI app comes along. We'll pilot with them and and work with them on it. Uh, another of their major areas is public and civic space. And they specifically acknowledge and act on environmental and climate change. Um. That's a little more problematic. Um, as you're very well aware, the idea of climate change has been politicized. And I would say in our county, I don't want the library to be leaders talking about climate change. Um, and saying it's definitely a thing and the library's planning for it. I don't think politically in our county, that's the wisest thing to do. Um. So what we're doing instead is we're focusing our efforts on a more positive response. We're not making it a political thing. So we're having sustainable programming. We're working towards more sustainable operations. So I give you some specific examples from our strategic plan. Explore grants to foster sustainability of buildings. Um, implement four ways to reduce waste throughout the system and create a sustainability team. Enhance sustainability programs, food sovereignty. So we are working in this space. It's just that we're not going to say. Yep, it's climate change. It's real. It's coming. And it's just a different approach, but I think it gets to a very positive response in this area.
Leading by example.
Yeah, um. It says engage a growing community of champions for open and innovative public space and design. And define what library spaces are for and be responsive to how the library spaces are being used by communities. And again, we have a slightly different focus on that. So we're going to conduct a two-one week facility usage reviews at Charlotte Hall or use data to understand collection use and shelf allocations. We're looking at use of our spaces. And use of our collection, using data to analyze them. It's the same kind of thing. It's just I think ours are slightly more focused.
May I interrupt you for a moment?
Sure.
Go back to page one, that last sentence. What's the beginning of that sentence? Supposed to be in green.
Why should I have an S?
It does. It should say ours. Ours are more focused. Yeah, yeah, ours, yeah. I wrote it in mine. And again, they want to, you know, learn about individuals' expectations from uses of library environment programs and services in a virtual space. And again, I think we're just more focused there. So part of our strategic plan is strongly market our electronic collection. Uh, library card registration via QR codes, adjust collection budget to align with demand. Um, we are evaluating those things using data. Um. Under the public trust, again, I think we're a little out of scope here. Um, stand firmly against the legalization of libraries and library workers. Um, I I think that we have a collection that is diverse, that we support and have. Um. Worked individually in county to. Ensure that we stand for intellect. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Great, thank you. Um. So, for example, the last bullet point in our public trust forged relationship with the media and state and local politicians to ensure that libraries are accurately represented in broader public discourse. We absolutely do that. Again, it's at a local level. We've got great working relations with the local media. Um, I sent you out a story that the enterprise just did uh via email. Um, we regularly talk with our county commissioners and our state delegation about what's happening in libraries. I I. I don't think that that's, you know, these are just things that we do, um. That necessarily mean part of our strategic plan. Under safety, violence and mental health, um. They're talking about providing statewide training. So that's going to be out of scope for us, but when they do, we absolutely will have our staff be in involved with that. And we also do local training on safety. And we have monthly safety meetings uh in the branches. Um, we probably bring people in to talk about things like de-escalation. When working with customers. Um. So something like at the very bottom of that page, legislative efforts to formalize protections for library workers, that's out of scope for us. And we will certainly do our share. But that's not something that would be in our strategic plan. I'm interested in. Sharing materials and resources. They're talking about creating a statewide or shared catalog. So that every system in Maryland use the same cataloging system. That would be something that would be happening primarily at Smarilla who provides catalog for us. And my concern would be, would there be state funding provided for that? And. Possibly what would happen would be that, uh, right now, a a majority of the library systems are using Polaris, so I don't think we'd be in for a change. But i- if we were, what would that system look like? And certainly we'd have to follow if that were done.
Are you talking about a shared materials or shared cataloging system?
Shared cataloging system. Um, we already have some shared materials, but this might even enhance it so that it would be easier to look out. If we had a shared catalog, we're in other Maryland libraries.
Would that imply that we could order a book from Oakland?
Um, you already can. Um, it just might streamline the process to see what's in the state and make it easier to make that request at the state. But you already can um request anything in the state and actually outside the state too.
And how would I know that it's available?
Um. Well, right now, um, there are places that you can work, including World Cat and OCLC. Um, but wh- what we primarily ask, um, what we primarily do right now is people request it. On our website. And. Um, or if they know the book exists, they can make a request for it that way. And if we don't have it, we go out and find a place that does. Thank you. The farthest one I've seen, um, has come from on ice. It was about seven fisheries. Um, so it's it's possible to get. Quite a few things. Of course, there are items that are, you know, unique, only one exists, and those institutions don't tend to lend them out. Excuse me, I should should have bought some water. Um. Under the workforce, uh, work workplace, workforce and organizational leadership. Um, those are all things that are going to be done at the state level and we absolutely will be a part of those if they happen. So. Um, we already have people who have graduated from LATI, the Library Associate Training Institute. Um. If they explore, you know, if they expand it or adapt it, we'll continue to send people to that. It's a great program. Um, develop pathways for individuals without master's degree. But with a graduate degree in another field to work as professional librarian, we'd have to change state law to do that. But if we're able to do that, then we'll be on board.
Have a question about that section.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Your your fourth one, where it says share model practices. You specifically, or there is, it says, or new adult recruitment. Why does it? Why does it say adult recruitment instead of just recruitment?
Um. That's a very good question, and I didn't write this. Um, so I don't know this. I'm just saying, here's exactly what it said. Um. Um, I think what they're talking about as new adult, I think what they mean is people who are like age twenty-one. Or they're newly adult, as it were. So I'm pretty sure that's what that means. Yeah.
I believe a new adult goes to age twenty-six.
Yeah. We're talking, you know, people who were starting off their careers.
Eighteen to like twenty-six.
Yeah. So I would say that many of the things in that statewide blueprint are out of scope for us because they're specifically at the state level. I don't know that we'd want to put them in our strategic plan in that case. In other areas, we're really already doing these things and it's in our plan. So I don't know that we need to change our specific plan's focus. To add still more to it. There's already plenty there, but this gives us something to keep in mind. And as these things happen at the state level. We'll absolutely be taking a part of them. Um. I was asked to come up with a tactical plan. Based on the strategic plan. In what order would we be doing things and what are things we're going to prioritize? And I um ran this by our team. It's primarily the things from the. Strategic plan that we're going to be year one, not surprisingly. But we did. You know, add a few things there that we're already going to be doing anyway. Um. And I did divide those into the. Strategic focuses, the digital literacy, embrace innovation. Um, community gathering and young minds. So. These are specifically what we'll focus on this year. I should say that a tactical plan like our strategic plan is fungible. If an opportunity comes along that we're going to pursue, we might add that in. And we're not saying we're going to do every one of these things, just so much as these are things that we're going to try to get done in the year. It will depend on our capacity. But so these are kind of the first steps in achieving the strategic plan, the goals we want to try to get this year. So any questions about any of those or about what the tactical plan looks like? And I'll give you a monthly or quarterly checkup on these. Just say, okay, here's what we, here's what we've done. Here's what we're working on. Here's, you know, why. And you can decide if you want that, you know, more regularly and quarterly. Um, but we will give you updates on kind of where we are on this, and that will be a nice checklist for our staff to kind of. Um, be keeping track of these as well.
On page two, the uh, where it says promoting specific library services to residents in specific zip codes. Do we have a, um, we have a sense of which zip codes that we're using? Oh, um.
Well, this is something that's in the strategic plan, and we really haven't started working on it yet since it's, you know, pretty early in July still. Um. I. Um, we'll be working with Laura on that. That's the every door direct mail. Um, I think that. It also says as funding allows, um, that it's going to cost us some money, so we need to look and see what the cost return benefit on this would be. I think what we will probably be doing with that, um. Is looking at areas with, that we think are likely to attend library programs and focus on those. More than, um, more than some of the outlying ones, but we'll just have to kind of see what we want to do with that.
All right. With that type of service, we're able to see. We can overlay the zip codes with our library users and areas where we have low and market penetration. We can focus on those areas. Um, another way you can use this service is for new residents. It's like when people move in. So those are things that we would want to explore more.
You have a county welcome wagon.
Not, but we could, um, some other places, um, do send basically a mailer to anyone who is. You know, like a new homeowner or whatever. Um, you, if you've moved recently, you've probably seen this or know someone who has. There are businesses that use this service, like when you move in, like Lowe's will send you a thing being like, welcome to your new home. Um, and so that is something that we could look into is the new homeowners, and it's a great way to just say like, welcome to the community.
If the question was, does the county have one? I don't think Welcome Back is active here. Yeah, so.
Maybe we ought to consider the feasibility of identifying HOAs and use that as a portal.
We actually have a, um, a good in because a lot of them use our meeting rooms. So we know of a lot of the HOAs in the community. Um, because we're a major place for meetings. Now, a lot of them have gone online since COVID. Um, and so we don't see them as often as we used to. Um, but. It is something that for some of the larger neighborhoods, we have investigated, especially because our mobile library is working through HOAs to get into some of the large neighborhoods. Um, so it is, it is definitely something we're looking at though.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to questions about the audit. Um, I provided John the questions that you gave to the auditor. Um, and. You said you had had a meeting with them and where we'd be using this document will be to guide questions for the upcoming audit. But I did want to clarify one thing, and that is you were asking about on the first page. About the libraries that component, you know, the Saint Mary's County government, and it turns out, yes, we are. Um, so we had our accountant look at that and investigate what a component component unit is. To boil it down, we get the primary amount of our funding from the county. And they call us a county component unit, so is Metcom, for example, so are the schools. So although our finances are separate from the county and we. Don't operate within their procurement system, we're still considered a component unit. So the audit is accurate on that. And that makes us a governmental unit. So we can't really apply for a five oh one C three status for the library, but we've got one for the foundation.
So they're making a distinction be- between us and say, like, public works?
Yeah, yeah. So so we are, we are considered a component unit, um, just to clarify that. Yeah, yeah. So, so we are, we are con- considered a component unit, um, just to clarify that. Um, so as that audit comes forward, um, please keep these questions in mind in terms of what you want to ask about in that audit. Um. I did give you a sheet or Belinda did, um. We are using the same audit company as last year. That's chosen by the county and we get a substantial price break. By not going out on our own. And it's also nice that, you know, they've got some experience now working with libraries. When you transfer to a new audit and I don't know, they have to get all the financial records from all the previous audits, which can be a problem. You're kind of breaking them in. Here's what a library does. Here's what this is. So we are going to be using the same auditor as last year. Um, Linda has provided you by your request, you wanted a schedule of the audit. So here is that audit schedule. Of when things are due and you see she's already started working on it. So.
It's like July is a busy month.
Yeah.
So, um, I did look back through my, on our first meeting with the auditors, and just so you know, their original statement was that they would have it done by September twenty-seventh. And then I think we discussed with them the idea that you, you wanted it as soon as possible. So I do believe they're going to try to get it done earlier in the month, but again, it will depend on all of these things, and they asked for more, they add things. This is what I have right now, the requests. They ask for more. They add more in as I go.
So just to reiterate what we've told you before in that while, you know, the state would like the audit reported back to them. And so for that matter, with the county by November first. Um, we have gone past that deadline in the past. I get an email saying, where's your audit? Um, but you have the amount of time you want to look at this audit. You don't have to rush it at all. So when you get the initial report, look at it. All the questions you want, we'll get those questions answered. Well, now we come to a very good moment in today's meeting, uh, in that we're going to go to giving you updates. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, first the, um, fund balance amount. Um, we provided you with the sheet. And you see that for the last two years, the fund balance has remained pretty much the same. Now, the amount we have in the various accounts goes up and down as deposits get made, as we pull money out. As interest goes in, as we use interest, um, as I noted to you when we were looking at the budget, we do use the interest as part of the budget. What the restricted funds are. So we're in, the fund balance can go up or down in a couple of ways. If the interest went into the account and we didn't use it, that would increase the fund balance. If we don't um, spend all the money in the budget for a year, that money could be considered part of the fund balance. Conversely, if we dip into the fund balance in order to pay for something, the amount might go down. But this has really kind of been stable the last two years, and it's not particularly growing. Um.
Can I ask for clarification?
Sure.
Let, let's take the bottom line there, June twenty-four.
Mm hmm.
Um, does this balance include money that are actually going to have to pay for the first month of the following fiscal year?
No, so these balance, this is the, all you asked me for was two years of the fund balance. This is the fund balance. So we have money in our PNC accounts. That's the operating fund. Um, I've moved, so this money represents what the fund balance represents. So if I don't get enough, if there's not enough in my operating funds, I will have to pull some money from the fund balance. But then once the deposit is made, the amount that I pulled will simply stay in and I won't, I will just pull the remaining. So for example, if I have to pull a hundred thousand dollars to run a payroll from the fund balance, and then I get a two hundred thousand dollar deposit, I will only take a hundred thousand dollars of that, put it in the operating fund and leave the hundred that I already took out. So I replenish the fund balance when I have to do that. Which is the dip that you see in this line. That is when I had to do that this year. I had to, I had to take to, to make a, to make a payroll before a deposit. I had to take fifty thousand. And then when the deposit was made of a hundred and fifty, I simply only took hundred out.
So this, this is all separate money. All separate money that if I was going to label it, would it be incorrect to call it rainy day money?
Um, no.
You could, you could call it rainy dooney or fund balance. Yeah, it's money that is not in the operating budget that is expected to be spent on something.
There's two lines here. The blue line is the fund balance. That's the four eighty-three, six ninety-two. The orange line is the account, because I haven't taken out, we do have some restricted funds in here right now, and I haven't taken out all of the, um, interest that is part of our operating fund. So the fund balance itself is the blue line.
And the account balance will grow as the budget grows because we'll have more expenses. But this is what we think as it were the rainy day fund, if we want to call it that, we can call it that, we can call it the fund balance. Um, is four eighty-three thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. So what we generally hope for, um, when we're doing our budgeting as a government entity is to have two months worth of expenses. Uh, we do not, um, have two months worth of expenses. We've got at this point, not quite one month in the rainy day fund, and that's an emergency fund. Belinda said, you know, talked about how she had to dip into it months before. Then when we get the money, you know, as it were back, um, but if something major were to come along, a natural disaster, um, yes, we're insured, but we probably want to recover more quickly than insurance money might show up. Um, I don't think that's an unreasonable amount to have as a fund balance, money that is not earmarked for something. But that's kind of where we are, and you asked for it as increasing over the years. No, it's staying about the same. So if we had a year within we did not spend everything that was allocated for the year, we might be able to say, okay, we've got extra, we can say that's now in the fund balance. Um, but that hasn't happened here in the last couple of years.
So this is Sharon, and I have a question about that. Just, I'm trying to, I, I appreciate this chart, and I think it's very helpful. I'm noticing that there was that, that total account balance from twenty-two to twenty-three. I would have expected if the interest operating funds were being incorporated into the budget, that that would have come back down. So that it would have come, so that you would see that red line come up and then come back down to the blue?
Yes, and you are right. It should, we haven't taken the interest out. I've left it in there. And so what's actually happening is we're using some of the restricted funds that we also have in our um, operating funds sometimes. Um, so, and I'm going to tell you, this is, that is how it should be working, but this fund has been, um, we've been working with the accountants the last two years to make it work the way it's supposed to as a fund balance. And so it hasn't been done that way in the past. It, we will probably start doing that in the future.
Okay, sure. Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
I also just wanted to clarify that this is in, this money here on this chart is in a completely separate account as our operating funds. So if our operating funds are increased each year, the fund balance remains the same. Because we take that money out and put it in our PNC account, which is our operating expenses. So you, Michael, you, you indicated that this fund balance would go up, and I, that's not my understanding.
Go up.
Um, but only if we don't spend all of our money.
Exactly. Yeah. So if we, if one year, now what has happened in the past, uh, several years back is, all right, we, we didn't spend all this money. The board voted to put it into the OPEB account. Therefore, the fund balance stays the same, but there's more money that's gone somewhere else. Um, so in many cases, that's why the fund balance might remaining stable over the years as we simply are not adding to it, we're taking money that might have been an increase in the fund balance and putting it into the OPEB account. And so if that were to happen this year, we don't, we won't know until we get the profit loss statement. You could say, okay, you know, here's ten thousand. A figure, I think this is just an example, that we were expected to spend, we didn't spend that ten thousand dollars extra, you could say, all right, that's, the fund balance has increased, or what has happened in the past in many instances is we're going to put that into the retirement benefits, uh, account, the OPEB.
So it's really two cylinders we're talking about here. There's operating money.
Mm hmm.
And there's fund balance money. Okay. So then on the operating money side, when that money comes in, are we out of, uh, FDIC or any other coverage on the balance over there?
No, we're not. Um. We, as a government entity, have extra protection on that money, and we reviewed that with you probably.
Couple of years ago.
Years ago.
That's why we opened the second PNC account.
So no, we're, we're not, we're not concerned about that. I mean, and I, i- if PNC were to collapse, I think the whole world would have more problems than that. But, um, no, I, I don't think that we would be out. Uh, we're, we're, we're sort of covered as long as PNC is, is a, a going entity. And the federal government would cover it if not. So that's kind of what we think, as I say, right now, as I say, the, the, um, the operating fund's going to grow as our expenses grow. Um, but that's kind of what we're thinking the fund balance is, and you, just to, what other questions do you have about that particular one?
Michael, could you, could you explain that? Say that again, because you said that the overall balance of this would grow as operating expenses grow, and I feel like that's not quite correct because it should, we should see the outflow be the same if the operating expenses are, it should be proportional to the income.
It, it is. It, it is. It's just that we're going to have to spend more money, is all I'm saying. But, but the fund balance amount will remain the same.
Right, and we would not see the total account balance increase in that because it would, we would see the outflow and income be the same.
Exactly. No, it's just, we're going to have to spend, we're going to have to spend more money. Okay, um. That being the case, we're, we're at a good point in the meeting because I get to stop talking for a couple of minutes and turn it over to Mary Ann and Belinda, who are going to give you an update on the RFP on our payroll system.
So we have, Belinda and I have been reviewing, uh, companies that we contacted, and we've had a couple co- uh, companies contact us. Uh, we've been doing demos and, um, they've been answering questions. We've looked at five companies so far, and, um, we have a chart which we are comparing them. Got that pulled up. So we started in May on this project, and we've been spending a minimum of three to five hours a week, and it's going up each week because, uh, we're getting closer to our review time. But basically for payroll companies, we, you, it's, it's not just the RFP. We are getting RFPs from all of these companies. But it's not a matter of just which one comes in the lowest. They also have to have the services we need to provide um, within their platform, and then how the platform works. How it integrates, it, it's usually, it's, it's two parts. Every payroll system is two parts. It's actually the payroll side and the human resources side, and they need to integrate well, which is what Paychex does not do. Um, as well as there's a reporting point, point, they also have to be able to send our tax information and, and be compliant. Um, so there's a, a whole network of things. Plus, there's the customer service side, which is really important for payroll companies. Because, um, if we have tax issues or like the Time to Care Act that's coming up, we need to make sure that those payroll companies can stay on top of those, um, taxing and compliance issues. Um, so there's a lot of things that go into choosing a payroll company that are not just related to the bottom line of the money. All of these companies, however, are coming in at half the cost of Paychex.
There's one company that was considerably higher, um, but we did not look at a demo of them.
Yes, that's true.
Um, so we've looked at, you know, where are they located, uh, the price and what we're finding. And I'm sorry, I'm looking away from you all, but I'm looking at my chart. Um, we're finding that a lot of them have hidden fees. Um, so they say, you know, that it's a cost per employee, but then they, they tell us later, oh, well, it's an additional cost for W twos or an additional cost for if we have a garnishment. So we're looking at all of those hidden fees, and one company said they, you know, in the very fine print, it says it's a two hundred dollar fee for every time you call for help to the customer service line. So, um, so we're looking at hidden fees, uh, we look at the way the payroll system works. Um, you know, do they charge for off cycle payrolls? Uh, and then there's the time in attendance with Paychex. We aren't able to have our, uh, our staff, you know, clock in and have it with a geo fencing, and just about all of these companies have that geo fencing now. You know, they can do it on an app. We just got Paychex working on our app. Um, so we look at what is their onboarding process, what's the hiring process, you know, where does it send out job announcements? Is it Indeed or LinkedIn or wherever? So we look at that. We are looking at how it, in, how it, um, integrates with our benefit system, which is through the county, that's through BSWIFT, you know, will it work together with that? Um, does it work with QuickBooks online? And then, you know, do they do background checks? Is that another fee? How much history will they import? And, you know, what's the storage capacity? Do they have training on the system that our staff, you know, compliance trainings, that type of thing? So there are a lot of things that we're looking at, and we're looking at the system, you know, with the uh, representative from the company. So it's a lot more than just reading the, uh, you know, their, their submission for the RFP.
Yeah, so we just wanted to give you a heads up because we would, we plan to make this decision by that first week of August. Um, because the implementation for a new payroll system will take several months. They have to, uh, they have to find out everything about our company, how our system is set up, our leave policies, our time and attendance policies, every policy we have as a, as that's directed towards our employees. Um, they have to create that background for us, then they have to pull all of the information from Paychex to their account. Then they have to run a dummy payroll that will coincide with the payroll that we do, and they have to be ready to run a payroll by December sixteenth. Because that is actually the first payroll that will appear in twenty twenty-five, and we're going to end Paychex at the end of twenty twenty-four in order to have a clear tax set for our employees. They get one W two for twenty twenty-four and a new one for twenty twenty-five. So that is our goal. We will have our chart. We will have the RFPs for you to, to look at, um, and in the future, but we are planning to have this, um, decision by August fifth. And again, we've been meeting with them, and I think that we, we are looking at five companies. We have met with five companies. We have met with them at least two to three times. We meet with them first to talk about our company. Um, they show us a brief overview, then we meet with them. They, they do a demo of their product all the way through. Most of the time that takes two meetings because it is a lot of information. And then there's a follow-up. And then there's a follow up generally about pricing and we're still doing this. We've still got these on the books. We we've been doing sometimes three or four a week.
Um, first question is, what is she you fencing?
So that is something magic that happens and tells us that they are clocking in at the library rather than
At their car.
At their house or in their car. So they're actually within the building. They are at work when they are clocking in because nowadays, you know, people can clock in on their phones. Well, they could, you know, clock in at their house and say that they came in and were not late when in fact they were.
So it's location.
It's location.
It's a location. It's a location fence.
Yeah.
It's G P S.
It's magic.
They say they're in the building.
Yeah, it's a location fence because, uh, we don't buy, you have to you know, the old time card stamp things, you have to buy those machines and now they're now they do have the computerized ones, but you have to pay for those. But if they use the app, then we don't pay extra for that. But again, they can clock in using their own phone. So therefore it's a fence that says you can't hit that clock in button until you are within the building itself.
I like my explanation better.
I'm sorry.
So that wouldn't.
Magic.
So that wouldn't apply to salaried employees versus time employees?
So it won't apply to exempt employees, but we do have non exempt salary employees. And those still have to, they should be having their hours tracked.
So by the time you do all this work and I applaud your efforts, you hope to have it down to two finalists?
No, we want to pick one. We're because we need to start it.
Because we have to 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 move forward.
Do you envision, given the complexity of all this, that we should be thinking about a special meeting to hear your presentation and rationale before we decide to go with?
This is an operational decision.
It's not a board decision. With the company that they picked to do payroll is not a board decision. It's an operational decision that the library administration makes.
I'm not comfortable with us not knowing what we're buying.
We can show you what you're buying, but, um, and we have narrowed it down. We're not gonna, we don't want to announce on this public forum. Who we think we've narrowed it down to, but honestly, we're still looking at all five. We want, we are comparing all five. And we're, we're ready, we will be ready to present whatever you want, but we will have, we will be presenting like the one we want to you and we'll show you all the rest. Happy to do that, but it's, it is complex and and there are a lot of things that you don't know how we use it. So we are trying to take all of that into consideration. And also like how I have to use it on my end, in the backend, how to run that payroll and how they integrate and how easily I can create a new employee and make them right. So we can show you all that, but you still wouldn't have the knowledge to make that decision for us as to which one's right. Happy to show you all of it though and tell you why we're making the decision. We will have that. We plan on doing that no matter what.
Okay, that's fine. So you have, you know, here's what we've looked at and here is the one we absolutely positively think is gonna fulfill our needs. May or not, may or may not be the cheapest one.
That's right.
But it's going to be the best, the best value for whatever we spend.
Yes.
Have I got all that right?
Yes.
And almost all of them are about half the price of Paychex. So we will be saving money.
What would be the length of the contract with them?
So, um.
With any of these essential.
They, they, that's part of the negotiation. There are some that are just month by month. Um, and then some that are like a two year contract. So it depends on which one we choose. They are, they, they have that set and it's part of our, it's part of our process of determining what's best for us and and what their package is, but some don't, don't have a required package. So it's just they, they're gonna say, we're doing this month to month and you can leave us when you want. Um, and some have a two year lock in price. Um, so that's gonna be part of, that's one of the lines actually that we have on our spreadsheet.
And are you looking at their history of price increases across their?
Yes.
Okay.
It's one of the questions we ask is what is their price? Has anyone in the past had a price increase? Is this a is the price that you're giving us a one time price and then it's going to go up? Those are questions that we ask.
Okay.
They also have to provide references to the other libraries that use them. And we will be checking on that as well.
Oh, and by the way, before we even started this process, we sent out to our library list serve requests for information from all the libraries on what they were using and helps narrow down who we wanted to look at to begin with. And we are still looking at a few outside of that, but we did get recommendations from other Maryland libraries on who they're using for payroll.
Okay.
Including Smurla.
All right. Well, I I gotta cycle back. I don't want us as a board to be sitting around later thinking, oh, my gosh, this is another mobile library. We didn't know anything about it. I would really like to have you all come before us and say, this is what we want. This is why we want it and have us bless that decision.
I disagree. This is an operational decision. And the mobile library was primarily funded by grants. I mean, what are you gonna do? Just give two hundred fifty thousand, three hundred thousand dollars back? Um, I think that you should trust the library staff to make a decision about what the best one for our purpose is.
I'm not arguing against that. I just want to see it and have us concur.
I think that's a waste of.
But I don't think you can, I don't think you can concur. You won't have all the information that you need about every, about the tests of the systems. They can say, here's the best. What are you gonna say? I don't think so. Um, this is something that they're putting a lot of time in and I think you need to trust the library staff to make this decision. They will present to you the winner and the why of the winner, but I don't think that you should say, yep, we agree. I think that this is something the library staff does on its own.
I agree with Mike.
Yeah, yeah, really informational brought on, on the board, on the trustees part.
Correct.
We don't empower to make contracts on our own and this is just something that we want to do. Because I think that we have the expertise to do it.
Again, John, we will present to you our choice and all the others and why we didn't choose them. Once we've done it.
Okay.
And we also have R F Ps out for upgrading the A V systems in our two libraries, Lexington Park and Charlotte Hall. And as you're experiencing, where do they need it? Um, I put that R F P out through the Maryland Emma system. We have had one response so far. They are due August first. We've had about ten other companies visit and they, um, had an open house on June sixteenth where any company that was interested could come and see the spaces. I have shared documents and photos with many of these ten possible bids. The bids are due August first and we have a team that will assemble to evaluate them based on experience with installing systems in libraries, based upon references, based upon cost, obviously, based upon the proposal. And this one doesn't have to be done as quickly, but I would like to look at the R F Ps that come in and just decide which ones. And in this case, unlike with, um, the R F Ps for the payroll system, we're really relying on responses via the Emma system. Um, so this is going to open it up across Maryland really. And there are some locals that if we are not happy with the R F Ps, we can go out and look at. But we're thinking that we're going to get a more competitive price for a good product by opening it up statewide. So we will be advising you on that. And the teams will be, uh, the branch managers at the two locations are I T staff and me. So I think we're gonna get some good bids, uh, from experienced people and we'll just have to sort of look and see what comes in here. Um, the one complication um, we have on this as far as I'm concerned is that the county gave us a one time stipend of a hundred and four thousand dollars per library, but they're not giving us that money upfront. They're giving us that over the year. So at some point, um, when these companies come in and do the work, we're gonna have to pay it all out. And so that might kind of put a hit for a couple of months on finances, but I don't think it's gonna be anything we can't handle. So looking forward to, um, getting some good replies that R F P and if we're not satisfied with any of them, of course, we don't have to take something that we're not happy with and we'll be evaluating those very carefully. We have a matrix to do that.
Um, it's past eleven o'clock, um. Depending on how long the two action items would take would be appropriate to take a break at this point.
That's up to you. Um, if you want to take one, sure. I don't think the action items are gonna take all that long. Possibly the director assessment might, but, um, I'm thinking right now not, um.
What's your?
Oh, I'm good.
We'll plow on through. Okay, fine free status of trustees. Um, there's nowhere established that officially we give fine free status to trustees, but in the past we have. So if somebody has served a five year term, then basically we've say, all right, you're fine free in the future. But I don't know that all of you are established as fine free in our system or not. So, well, I'm sorry, what? You're not. So we, it it has just been something we've done in the past, but I'd like it officially established that we offer current serving trustees fine free. And if someone served a five year term, that they continue to be fine free as service to the library. And we're talking very little amounts of money here. So I just think that that's a, a, a good perk for serving on the board. It's not like you get a lot. So I I would like to just make that a policy that we do.
Question, did, did you have a lot of would be fines from trustees previously?
No. They, they tend to be pretty responsible library users.
Uh, I'm asking that question because I don't have a problem if I'm late with the pain of fine. I mean, it's going toward helping the libraries. I don't have an issue with it.
Yeah, I think if I'm irresponsible and I'll bring my book back, I should pay for it.
Yeah, I mean, that's just how I feel.
I agree. And I feel like setting a precedent for fine free for trustees is a little bit like insider trading. Kind of makes me uncomfortable.
But, but there are past trustees for whom that is already in place. Why don't we grandfather them and say no from this point forward?
I don't have an issue with that.
I would agree with that.
If that's what you want, then that's what we'll do. No problem at all.
I don't think we should have any special status.
Yeah, that's my stance too. I, I made a point of paying mine off a few days ago.
Well, we're grateful for that. Um. And you you noticed that we did not go fine free for our customers this year. It just wasn't the right time. I hope in the future we can consider doing that. The material still comes back. Study after study shows, in fact, it comes back better. You don't lose people because a fine builds up and they say, I'm not going to the library anymore. But with every dollar at stake, you know, at thirty or forty thousand we're making in fines, I'm just not ready to give it up yet. So some year. I hope so. We may next year ask the county commissioners, please give us money just for that. Um, I received last night this, um, performance evaluation form for the director. And so I printed it off for you. I don't know what what status we are on this. It says that it will be June, July, I'm sorry, July first to June thirtieth, but my understanding from last month would be that you were going to be doing an interim assessment. So I don't know where we are. Did you want to use this form for the interim assessment? In which case I would have suggestions for the last page of the goals because some of these were set for an annual and not for a six month. So, um, I, I, I simply have questions about where we are. Do you want to adopt this as the official form? And vote on that? Do you need, since you haven't had much time to look at it, to do that next month? In which case we'd be pushing back the six month assessment as it were.
I, I agree with your memory. I think that the goal was to kind of align everything with the fiscal year. The calendar year, whichever, and all, but there would be a short assessment in there somewhere. I think you are correct in that.
Okay, so with that in mind, and and Sharon, you you haven't even had a chance to see this yet. Oh, um. Um, I don't know that we need a motion for this, um. All right. So if you want to make that an official policy, then I, I, we would like a motion and a second and a vote on having trustees who are currently fine free remain so a previous trustees and then uh, doing away with that benefit for the future.
All right. So we can put a motion.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that the previous trustees be grandfathered for fine free status. And current and future uh, would have to pay fines if needed or necessary. Or do.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? Can we get a vote, please? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Um, so again, I I don't know where we are on this as a form. Um, I, I don't feel as comfortable as saying, do you want to approve this when you've not had a chance to preview it very well? Um, but if you, hey, and and Sharon, you haven't even had a chance to see it yet. Um, it only came in last night. So, um, where do you want to go with this right now?
I move that we defer this to the next meeting.
Do we need a motion for that?
I don't think we need a motion for that.
I have a question. We do. What, what were the updates you were, um, talking about for the short?
Uh, um, so for example, if we look at, um, organizational climate survey goal five, that's not due till October. And so I didn't even on on an interim, that's sort of, it's not something we can do. Um, so I think that, um, for a January through June even, and let's just say that's gonna be the interim assessment so that you can set it up on a fiscal year going forward. I'd say the strategic plan should be something that you're assessing. And that took a lot of work. The budget, um, security, because we have been working on that during this six month period. Um, the bilingual resources, we have been working on enhancing that. So those would just be things that, um, I think that you could say, um, would be worthy of assessment for the first six months of the year, and I can provide you with a list of that for next time. And then you can see if you want to add anything to it, but those are things that I think you probably want to say, okay, we can, we can look at this so far. And then I should tell you that I've been talking to the county, but I'm not getting as much traction on a meeting as I'd like to talk about the fiscal year twenty eight capital funding projects. We are starting to plan for that and I did sit in the, um, meeting where this year's capital funds from the state was dispersed and I wish we had applied this year because we would have gotten a lot of money, but, um, so, uh, so that is gonna be moving forward and by the end of the calendar year, you will have information that you can assess on that.
So not to put you on the spot, when you said not much traction, they don't want to hear it? It's too early?
They, um, they've been really, the, the person I'm working with is really busy, um, but I have phone calls in and out, so it will happen. So we're just gonna vote on this as an official forum next month.
Yeah.
And, um, I will provide you a list of things that might work for a six month assessment and you can decide this is the this is the form we'll use. Here's what we're going to assess. And then for the next month after that, you would have the six month and then there'd be going forward, it would be a whole year before you did another one.
All right.
All right.
When should that be ready? Before the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah. You have this form and and just share that. And you say, yep, that's the form we're gonna use and I'll provide a list of the things for the first six months that you can agree or not agree.
Okay, and we'll, and we'll get that, uh, list of the first six months, uh, in advance of the meeting?
Yes.
All right. All right.
That's what I had. And skipping new trustee business for just one second. Your next meeting was scheduled for August ninth. It was scheduled to be at Charlotte Hall, but we had poor luck with the AV system there last time. The AV upgrade won't be done yet. And so we're going to instead schedule that for, I believe it's Leonard Town. Leonard Town instead. The question is about having that meeting. I've been summoned to jury duty that day and I might not have jury duty, but I'm eighteen in the pool. So I might have jury duty that day. Mary Ann is on vacation in Montana. So I think, given the fact that we'd like to report the decision to you about the payroll system and that you're going to be voting on this, I think we might like to have a meeting, but I don't know who's gonna lead it.
Yeah, I will be there.
Okay. And Michael Dunn will not be there. So you won't be there. So I think maybe, and you only have to have ten meetings a year. You don't have to have twelve. But it might be a good idea to cancel next month.
I know a lot of, there's some community organizations that don't even meet July and August, the two, like Rotary and so forth.
You have canceled an August meeting previously, so it wouldn't be the first time. It would push back that six-month assessment, but that doesn't bother me any. And we will give you full reports and possibly can then give you an also report on the AV equipment system for September. So I think we're, we're good for not meeting next time.
But you say we will have packets to look at?
The packet would probably come for September. But I, I can, I can send you out and often have, you know, information as things come in. So.
To cancel August's meeting, will we need formally vote on that?
I think probably a good idea, yeah.
All right.
All right, I make a motion that we cancel August meeting.
I second.
All right, motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
All right, well, obviously I have to do my civic duty. I would much rather meet with you than sit on a jury. I don't get to say that. So our next meeting will be September and I'll get you an exact date. And
All right.
Uh, any new trustee business you'd like to?
Oh, just a question about the United for Libraries event on July thirtieth. There's a, the online portion for trustees. Pay for it ourselves and ask for reimbursement or, or, or does the system cover that for the trustees?
What is, I'm sorry, what is this about?
United for Libraries event going on the week of, last week of July, and I believe July.
Um, I thought State of Maryland was covering that. Was there a registration fee involved with it or?
It looked like, but I need to confirm.
If there is, the library will cover that. It shouldn't be an expense out of pocket for you. That can be something that we can do out of our staff development funds. What's that?
It's not much.
The United for Libraries, isn't it their conference? I think it's their conference, so it probably is an additional fee. I thought the training expenses came out of the board fund, but.
That's what I thought too.
Fund anymore.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, then yes, it would come out of the staff development fund.
And I don't think there'll be a lot of expense involved with that, but let us know and we will reimburse if there's, if there's a cost.
All right. Trustees have me.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have two quick questions about the Schwab account. And on page four of nine.
Let me find it. Just one, sorry.
Can I just say, if you guys do need to be reimbursed, I form that.
All right, got it. Thanks.
On page four. Maybe this is just the way they look at us. I don't know why, but look at income summary, the line where it says income summary in bold. And you go across, why do they even break this out to federally taxable or tax exempt?
I do not know, but I can ask asset strategy that question.
Okay. And staying on that same page and look under cash transaction summary. This period, drop down there and you see withdrawals and other debits, zero. So when you go to page, when you go to page three, the preceding page, there's a ten-dollar discrepancy on year-to-date about where we started, what we put in, what we took out. Where did ten dollars go and for what?
And that's under what, what number?
I'm, I'm on page three. Change in account value. So if you, if you do the math, the bottom line comes up ten dollars short. See, eleven oh nine oh eight eight goes in. Income reinvested eleven oh eight oh eight seven. Where is that ten dollars?
Again, I'm not, so you pointed out where it said withdrawals and other debits, zero. So what fig, what amount do you think should be going in? Sixty-six five oh eight?
No, I think there should be another ten dollars in the bottom line. Four seven three, two thirty-four seventy-four. We're going to explode.
Or so the total amount of total account value is, you, you think should be one million four hundred seventy-three thousand?
Yeah. No, 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 not seventy-three thousand, ten dollars more. Two thirty-four is two forty-four. I'm just looking, where is ten dollars?
I, I see two thirty-four seventy-four and this is page three.
Left-hand column has a dollar fifty difference between the credits and the income reinvestment.
So, so credits at eleven zero nine zero and income reinve, and income reinvestment at eleven oh eight eighty-seven. And you're asking where the ten dollars is there?
Yeah.
All right, I can try to ask asset strategy that, but this report is prepared by Char, by Charles Schwab. It comes to us online, so we might have to get to Schwab to find the answer to that question. Asset strategy probably won't know.
Well, they're, they're, they're the ones that are using Schwab as custodian, so they ought to be the ones to dig around for the answer.
Well, I can, I can ask them, no problem.
Okay. Also, just FYI, year-to-date, we're up sixty-nine thousand six sixty-five. Which if my math is right, we are up four point nine nine percent for the year. We're not making much progress about reaching funded.
Well, remember that early in the year, the account was lower. So I think over time, that's nice growth, but yeah, getting fully funded is a problem.
Yeah.
All right. Any other new trustee business?
Everybody have a great August then and try to stay cool. It won't be a problem today or tomorrow, but we're back to ninety-five on Sundays.
To vote to adjourn?
Yes. Forget a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 See you next month.